All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the April 23 meeting of the zoning commission to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its defense, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is the commission introduction and seating of alternates. My name is Mark Laufman. I'm the commission chair. We'll start from my right.
Eric Lukingbeal, member.
Christine Chinney, member.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Brennan Shaheenan, member.
And we have Commissioner, excuse me, Bob, are you there?
He is not joined yet.
Okay. We have Commissioner Mullers out and Paula will be sitting in from him. And Commissioner Labits supposed to join us on Zoom, but if he shows up, we're left alone. Meg's not here today, right? Okay. Next on the agenda is public session. Does anyone wish to?
Sorry?
Hi, Bob. Public session. Would anyone like to speak to the zoning commission about a zoning matter of not on the agenda, not subject to a public hearing? Please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? I'm being seen. We'll close public sessions. Next on the agenda is an action on the minutes of April the 8th, which was the sidewalk of 563 Samuel Brook Street. Looked fairly straightforward. I wasn't there, but it looks like the site visits. So I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
All right. I'm approving because I looked at them and they looked like the site visit would be.
Yes, it certainly does.
So the minutes pass. Next is the action of the minutes from April the 9th. I had just one comment on the meeting also present. We did have alternate Meg was there, so nobody could show her on the minutes because she did attend the meeting. Otherwise, I thought they were good. Any other comments?
Good to meet you.
If there's no other comments, I will take a motion to approve as a amendment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as a amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Minutes pass. Next on the agenda, we have two public hearings scheduled this evening. The first is an application for permit modification for a small engine repair at 371 North Granby. I'll ask Vice Chair Myers to read the call to the hearing, please.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. Do you hear and consider the following items? Application seeking a special permit modification under zoning regulations, section 3.5.4.3 for small engine repair service with outside storage in display for property located at 371 North Granby Road, C2 zone, file Z-5-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
It's the applicant or their representative here. Just introduce yourself, please.
John Pigno, 19 Days Street South, at Granby. One of the property owners at 369 371 North Granby Road, not the tenant. Yeah, we're here to request permission for modifications to the garage building, which is the old Shaw's garage, to increase the storage size in the rear of the property and also to delineate some sales area in front of the property and add some additional storage to the rear side of the building if you're facing it from Samuel Brook Street.
Before we go through there, just ask staff, Abby, is there any? I know there's been some back and forth. Is there any current enforcement action here?
No, there's no current, yes.
But is it out of compliance? Is that?
Yes, so that, yep.
So why don't you explain a little bit about what you're wanting to do and change? And I'm sure the commission asks questions.
Sure. The storage area in the rear, originally the application was submitted for 35 by 50 area. And we met with Wetlands, Kate was at Budnas, to extend it from 70 feet to 50 feet. And not knowing that where we delineated on the actual property map, it is across the property line, 369, which is zone R2, I believe, Abby?
Two, yeah.
Right? So we would need to shift that area to the right to stay compliant with the 70 feet by 50 feet, if we're allowed to do that. And then the sales area would be to the left of the property in the front. He does sell tractors and snow blowers, heat blowers, and he's looking for a designated sales area out front to the left. And then to the right of the property on the side, he's looking for an additional 16
Abby's Wetlands has approved?
Yes, so Wetlands did approve the expanded area to the rear. On the area in front and to the side, as shown on the markup site plan, are outside of the upwind review area, so that doesn't require people through Wetlands. And I did just want to note that the Wetlands agent has a standing agenda item for Wetlands to monitor that outdoor storage area because of the pattern of noncompliance with the storage to the rear to moving toward that is on their agenda.
I'll start off where I'm extremely disappointed in this site. I drive by.
Hi, Bob Labbit.
Okay, no, Bob's joining. Hello, Bob.
Hi.
It's, looks like a junkyard for tractors. The front's not for sale, sales, it's got stuff and, you know, I just wonder if you could comment too, because you're asking the commission, you're already out of compliance and you want to make it bigger. Can you comment about the?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm the property owner, I'm not the tenant. And we tried to enforce and ask him to move the equipment in the back and to come into compliance, and it's been difficult, so.
So how would us approving that change that?
I don't know. I mean, we've asked over and over, and I guess it's, I understand, it's been challenging.
Ask my question, commissioners?
I guess I'm baffled a bit to hear this. I'm not sure why there would be any reason to approve this based upon noncompliance, which apparently has no solution. So is there something you could tell me to get me to approve it?
I'm interested.
Yeah, I mean, he has, I mean, he is compliant in the rear, correct? That area, he did come into compliance.
With the Wetlands approval, but still not with what planning and zoning approved for the special permit.
Thirty-five by 50, yeah. I mean, every time I talk to him, he says he's a one-man shop, small business owner in town, and there's only so much he can do. Again, I'm just the messenger, right? I'm trying, we want him to compliant as well, for sure.
I guess I would echo what our chair and Commissioner Lukingbeal said. I'm having trouble understanding why we would even consider approving this when he hasn't been in compliance with what he's already received. It seems to me this will just be an invitation for further noncompliance.
This question is, how come the business owner's not here tonight?
I wish I could answer that.
I don't want to beat up on you, but I drove by today, and I mean, it was just solid cars and a couple of people out in front talking. There was no sense of organization. We've said yes to a couple of things in the back. Maybe there's stuff in there too, but it looked like a handsome junkyard. I mean, I couldn't see any reason how we could possibly say yes to this until he's in compliance and gets his act together. And we'd like him to do that because we encourage small business, but not when it looks like this, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, I'm good.
We beat up enough.
I mean, I'll echo Commissioner Johnson's. I mean, I like the fact that someone's building's been empty for many, many years since I left town. It was nice to see someone running a business like that. And I think my fellow commissioners support the idea of a business there, but it's, it's just not, it's just not where we've approved it and what the intent of, I think, the original approval was for. Hearing you tonight, I don't, you know, the operator's not here, you don't sound like you have an air of confidence that they're changing things, so it's difficult for me to be supportive of this based on what's currently going on in the testimony here today, so.
And just to echo one thing, other thing that the chairman just said, this isn't about this commission not being pro-small business. I believe when the original application came before us, we approved it in manor suit. So it's not that we don't want this business or that we don't like small businesses. And I was happy to hear that it was going to be occupied, but I drive past it every day because I live in North Granby. And it's just, it's always a mess.
My house doesn't look like that.
I'm sure it doesn't. It's not your mess.
Yes, absolutely. And we are trying, and all I can say is what he tells me. And I know he's, have a child on the way, and again, he's a single business owner, but...
There's too much there to do.
Abby, based on the passed approval, I know the front's not what we approved for. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to go with staff concerns, so.
Sure. So the commission approved the storage to the rear, which was 30 by 50, based on the site visits, and I included some photos in here. There's extensive storage across the front of the property. To the side, so on the north side of the building, there's a trailer parked there, additional equipment that's, again, outside of the approved outdoor storage areas. This has been an ongoing issue. I think I first contacted the tenant back in April of last year, and it took this long to at least get him to the point in compliance and approve through Wetlands. So I guess I would have similar concerns from staff, you know, in terms of enforcement moving forward. And the property owners have been, you know, we did meet on site, and they were very responsive. I do want to point that out. But it's a matter of the business operation itself. I think that is challenging here.
Any commission questions before we open up to the public? Nothing more. Anything else? This won't let you come back. Okay. Hey, any members, excuse me, before you go. Bob, I apologize, I'm not good with Zoom. Is Bob still there? Did you have any questions for the applicant, Bob?
Somebody's got his or her hand up.
Really?
The one that's just a phone?
Hi. No, I don't have any questions. I can see where this thing's going. I would note he did incline, if he cleaned the property up to, you know, help him with some more sheds to store stuff, but, you know, what I'm hearing now, you know, doesn't make sense to approve the application, so.
Thanks, Bob. Any members of the public like to come up and speak on this application? Come on up.
Bob Lindire, 367 North Granby Road. I'm in the letter to this property. I knew Lyle Shaw for many years, and he's a hell of a guy and all that stuff. While he had a lot of stuff in the backyard, it's nothing like what we have today. So I do have several bits I have written down that I'd like to speak about. One is, does the previous grant from Wetlands allow you to encroach closer to the Wetlands or closer to the stream? You know, so he got approval to store up to 50 feet from the building, I believe. Does that allow him, because he already got previous clearance for that, does it allow him to get closer to the stream in the backyard? You know, it's a pristine fountain, salmon stream, it's very clean. Part of that stream runs through my property just above his. So then also says, the other thing I have is seeing how it's a wetland area, and, you know, I've been through some big storms and walking in the backyard and up to my knees in water, so there's a lot of water that has a potential to go through there with all these pieces of equipment laying out there. Is there a hazard of extra oil dripping out to the ground or gasoline coming out of tanks and things like that that will spoil the ground? So that was part of my concern. Also, it is very unsightly. Both I can see the front yard and I can see the backyard from my house. And, you know, he's got all this junk in the front that is in the area of things that are to be for sale. Unless he's a scrap dealer, I don't see how he can sell any of that stuff. There's pieces that are out there that look like they're in pieces. The stuff in the back is, I don't know what it is, but I know once, I guess they enforced some of the compliance, he had dumpsters coming in and they filled dumpsters full of his stuff. So obviously, it's not worth much if he's just throwing it out. And I also was under the impression last year that they were supposed to build a fence to hide all of that stuff. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure, but, you know, to keep it, so it was not visible, at least from a sixer speed or something like that. And that never happened, but what he did do is he bought little tents to cover the stuff in the backyard, which is better than that, but there's still stuff out there. So it is, it is like a big glorified junkyard, in my opinion. And, you know, being a property owner, you know, I'm elderly and I'm probably going to sell in a few years, and I don't want that to detract from my property value. Other question I have to the board is, are there any other businesses in town that have the same exclusion from the rules?
What do you mean exclusion, Bob?
That are allowed to conduct their business not inside of a building? Because that was one of the things that you allowed him to get, one of the excuses. I don't want to say excuse, but you excused the enforcement of that as part of his property.
I have to go back and, I don't know what your...
So the zoning regulations specifically allow outdoor storage and outdoor activities by special permit or zone?
Yeah, so are there a lot of those? That was the term, I didn't, I wasn't sure with that term, but the special permit. Is there a lot of those in town?
Well, the commission has another one on the agenda tonight for outdoor storage.
Well, I mean, are they, any that have been passed?
I don't know off the top of my head.
There's other ones in town, Bob. I don't know what they are. You can go look at them. I know we had some down south end of town. You know, business has things outside they can store, and the regulations state very specifically.
We approved that landscaping supply place and stop and shop. We do it.
All right. That's more of an agricultural kind of a business, or is it?
No, it's not. C2 business.
All right.
That's a difference, too.
We're not C2 business zone where we are.
This property has a C2.
And then the other one was the disregard for trying to become compliant with the rules and regulations that were required. That was a big concern of mine. And the question also that says, the forgiveness, I'm sorry, the...
Special permit?
Special permit, thank you. Does that go with the business or does that go with the property?
They run with the land usually.
Yeah, so I have a big problem with that. So if he goes out, then anybody who moves in can do the same thing some other way. And I have a big problem with that because being a landowner right next door, we have a beautiful, we're in a residential area, it's a beautiful area, and I hate to see that, so. Then also, I've heard and seen reports, no, I haven't seen, but I've heard reports of them driving vehicles over the septic fields, which could damage the septic fields. And again, it's hearsay on my part, but again, it's a concern because you don't want that kind of stuff just flowing everywhere. And, you know, my well is very close to that, it's in the corner of my property that abuts his property. And if he's having effluence coming out of his machinery that's sitting in the backyard, I have a problem. And if he has driving over the septic tanks, potentially damaging the fields and things like that, I have a problem with that, too. That's what I have to say. Do you have any questions of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we move on?
And I have some, John, well, I know, I work with this bothering, but, yeah, so.
Before we move on, because Mr. Lindire had a point I was going to make in the second round, but since you've got a broad fence. I do believe as part of the original application, did we not specify the outdoor storage was supposed to be fully contained in a fence?
Yes, it was supposed to be contained.
Because I'm looking at Google Earth right now. It looks like we got one side of a fence, but nothing more, right?
That's right.
So the proposed expansion, I don't see any reference to additional fencing.
No.
Did I? I must say.
Yeah, there is a note that there would be a wood stockade fence. This is the March 14th received plan.
Okay.
Along the expanded area.
The one you emailed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But they're not in compliance today. I screen them. Currently, they're not in compliance. Like I said, I only see one side of it. I perceive it would be a three-sided fence, because it would be up against the building.
Yeah, so there was some fencing up, but to contain it, but certainly with this proposal would have to be the stockade.
Okay. My side, thank you. Let's see if anybody else wants to go, Bob. Anybody else like to speak on this application? Come on up, we're nice.
Dave Roman, Edstone, Hecway. I'm winging Edstone, and I'll have any notes. See if I can do the best I can here. Thirty-five years in North Granby, and everything was really nice up until this guy moved in. I just, we're just very disappointed in what's going on there. It's a mess. It really is. I know you also have evaluated it, and you know what's going on. I don't need to tell you. But it just keeps getting worse. It's like every day, it's more and more junk, seemingly. Pretty soon, it's going to be in the street. I mean, it's almost in the street now.
Today it was.
There's no like buffer, no distance requirement. He's all over the place, this guy. I just don't understand why a business can move in to town and get approved without a plan, without a business plan, to present to the town, and then the town from there would evaluate the plan and assess it and decide whether it's suitable. But it's obviously not in the right place. This guy needs a bigger facility. He needs to be maybe in an out-of-sight location where he's not out front and center in front of a world to see. I just don't see this. I don't know how you feel about it, but I think it's the town's responsibility to, you know, take action. It's been going on now for a couple of years. I'm not sure exactly what date it was he moved in, but it seems like it's been at least two years. Does anybody know? You sure when he moved in?
2021.
Yeah, so it's been a while. And seemingly, nothing's been done to remedy this situation. I don't know what the process is, but he's obviously out of compliance with a lot of Why isn't he here tonight? Is another, you know, why wouldn't he be here? The owner, so the owner of the property is also really responsible. He's renting it out. He should have a lease, I would think, which would have limited the exposure of this collection of items that he's got there. I mean, it's not just tractors, it's trucks, trailers, you name it. I mean, it's just, it's like a junkyard. So I don't know what else I can say. That's just the way I see it. I think a lot of other people would feel the same way. And I would encourage you guys to take some, maybe a little more drastic measures to get this thing resolved. It's just, you can't let this go on. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom like to speak about this? Anyone else? All right, Bob, come up quick. Just have to say your name and address again, please.
Bob Lindire, 367 North Granby Road. So you said in the previous discussions with a business owner that they were supposed to put up a fence, and you were under the impression that there was some fence there? I don't think there is, because I certainly can't see it from my house.
I can't attest to how old this Google image is, but at one point, there was some...
There was an old garden in the back. I used to mow the lawn there three years for Lyle while he was in the convalescent home. And there used to be a fence around the garden, but I don't see a fence there unless it's like a cattle fence or something like that, which is three bars that is going to stop stuff. Certainly not going to stop anything with the view, so.
Thank you. My side. Anyone else? I'll back up.
John Pigno, 19 Days Street South. Yeah, Brian and I are equally as frustrated as everybody here. Okay, I definitely hear all the concerns. I'll bring those concerns back. There is a cattle fence, or there was a cattle fence, Abby. I'm not sure if it was still there when you were there, but it has been there. I know he moved it to kind of reorganize everything. But again, I just want to relate that we definitely understand what the concerns are. And we don't like it any more than anyone else.
If you can't answer this question, you don't have to, but why are you presenting this if you feel it's...
Well, I think this has been kind of a long, drawn-out process. He gets a little bit into compliance, and then he shows us he's not willing to be compliant, and then he does some work. So we're trying to keep a tenant in a small business in town operating. I don't want it to look like an eyesore either, but at the same time, we're trying to be considerate of his business as well. Understood.
Anything else for the applicant? Nothing. Good morning.
No, I got nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're going to close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to make its decision. Most likely, we'll touch upon it this afternoon or later this evening. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing seeking a site plan modification for fabricated shed, 18 Harford Ave. Vice Chair Myers, could you read the call to the hearing, please?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. Do you hear and consider the following items? Application seeking a site plan modification for a prefabricated shed for property located at 18 Harford Avenue, COCE Zone, file Z-7-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
It's the applicant or their representative here.
I'm Peter Taylor, one of the lessies of the new Baharu taking over the four-gates site.
And I've got to say, my business partner is the guy that did all this, but unfortunately, he's traveling, so. The designated speaker, and I apologize for my accent. We would like to put a storage shed no bigger than 16 by 12, purely for dry goods. At the moment, the whole system was we had storage facilities above the property that is Corrigan Lawyers. It's not ideal. People are going up and down the steps several times a day. It's towards it. It becomes a health issue, a fall, especially in the winter. So we approached the landlord asking if he would have any objection for us to put a fabricated shed, typically a Claude Farm type shed, purely for storage, dry goods, maybe winter the chairs and dinner on the patio, that type of product. That's basically it.
I think there was one question added from staff about how far the shed's going to be from the curb.
Yeah, so that's just something we would want verified. There's plenty of distance to be outside of the required side yard setback, but just making sure it's a proper distance from the curb within kind of the allowable area there.
And we were going to try and get it as far back as possible from the curb, obviously without losing some of the trees that are already. So we would probably get as close to ours as is possible.
This is a site plan modification, so we're just looking for.
Correct.
Conformance with the site plan, with the regulations.
Right.
And outside of the curb, everything else is?
Yep.
In compliance?
Yep.
Commission questions?
I have one. The current site plan requires the dumpster to be in an enclosure. Will you keep the dumpster in the enclosure?
Absolutely. And it is in an enclosure already. Yeah.
All set.
Addition. Good.
There's no other changes to the site plan, right?
No, so just noting that specific distance.
It's funny to me.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it'll be an empty building, actually.
Your rendering looks nice, so that's all.
My business partner. He's better than me.
Better than a trailer on the nose.
I have a question. There isn't anything noted for landscaping any shrubbery or anything, or is that going to be put on the corners or anything to just break it up a little bit?
We had no, we weren't going to put any further landscaping, there is already. If that's required, then sure, that's not a problem.
Summer's pot.
That's not, it's, it'd be, we, it's a friendly suggestion. It looks nice. I mean, that's up to you. It's not.
Obviously, the doors on these things probably restrict certain landscaping. Because obviously, you want to have access to it.
Of course. No lights associated with this shed?
No, internally, there will be.
Internally, right.
Yeah. No, there are existing lights on the patio area, but yeah, there's no additional lights.
Ask the public. Any member of the public want to speak on this? Bob, I keep forgetting. If you need to ask them, just chime in.
Yeah, I've got no problem with this. This is Bob Ladd, and I have no problem with this.
Anyone else on Zoom? I don't have any, just have that one clarification, which you can provide to staff.
Yeah.
I don't have any.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the restriction from the curb? Is it a certain distance, I'm assuming?
Yes, so there should be a couple of feet just for a car over here. And again, you have plenty of.
I think we estimated a three feet back stop from the curb.
Okay. And you'd want to make sure there's enough room for the doors to swing open, too, of course, so.
I think that's where this, like, if you open them, you don't want them opening in the parking lot.
No.
Yeah.
The idea is we'll put the doors on the end that will open towards the patio. But again, you know, it depends on.
Just your site plan, and I don't know if that has to follow this, you have the doors facing the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So is that not?
To be honest, it depends on what's available at Claude Farm.
Does that matter for the site plan, how the doors are?
No, as long as it's within the same.
As long as it doesn't open on the parking lot, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that might be something you would put with staff that, you know, if you do, we wouldn't want it infringing on, or as cars knows in.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, are we any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Set?
Yeah.
All right, well, good luck with the endeavor.
Yeah.
We're going to close the public hearing. Commission has.
Sixty-five.
Less on the site plan.
No, no, sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days.
We just have sixty-five days for approval, but we'll be discussing it most likely this evening. Thank you. Remember all these timings. Okay, item number eight, we have receive applications and scheduled hearings. So Abby, I see you have two. Do you want to explain those?
Yes. The first application is seeking a special permit under section 3.8.10. This is the commercial recreational use, so specifically for an arcade at 518 Sammerbrook Street. This was actually brought to my attention by a commissioner that there was an arcade operating up there. So we did meet with the business owner and informed them that a permit was needed for that operation. So he has submitted and will be coming before you all. We also have an application seeking a special permit for ten-lot F R D re-subdivision at Cider Mill Heights. This is 604 Cider Lane. So it was approved by the commission in the early 2000s, I believe. The subdivision approval lapsed, and they are looking to come in, re-cement for that, and this would be the ten lots on what was previously approved as a public road. And I do have one more to report, too. We did receive a special permit for a garage over 1,000 square feet for 279 Silver Street. So if the commission is in agreement, I would suggest that the two special permit applications be scheduled for the May 14 meeting, I think it is. And then the F R D application that does need to go to the Conservation Commission for review at their meeting on May 14, so I would suggest that hearing open on May 28.
Maybe the special permits on the 14th and the F R D 28th, is everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Thank you. All right, next, we have consideration of applications where the commission has concluded the hearing. We have actually four. We have two continued from last meeting and two from this evening. Just a suggestion, was the commission being interested since we have some applicants here to discuss the ones we just concluded?
I would.
Yes. Yes, I think yes.
Is that okay, because we have you sitting as well?
Right.
So I have a motion to reorder the agendas.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So we close to, the two hearings we closed, we'll start on that. The first was a special permit for modification for 371 North Granby. I will start and again, reiterate that I'm liking the idea of a business being there. You know, it used to be a garage, and Mr. Lindire stated he knew the owner from back there, but it is not what this commission approved today. And I have absolutely no confidence, especially from the testimony today, that the site will improve based on this. It's out of compliance, and the applicant himself hinted that he's having difficulty having it compliant. So I would be not inclined to support this change and actually would be more inclined to have our zoning enforcement officer look into this more. And if they do, improve in the future to come back. So that's my comments.
I would absolutely agree with that. I don't see why we would approve expanded use on a property that's never been in compliance with what we gave them the first time.
Yeah. We're not going to get the gentleman's attention unless we deny this and suggest that enforcement may be in the office.
Absolutely.
I think our zoning enforcement officer should devote immediate attention to this one.
Absolutely.
Brennan?
I'm not sure. I agree. This was originally approved for small engine repair site, correct? And now there's vehicles parked out back that.
It's, there's not in compliance with the.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's just very disturbing with the wetlands. I think Mr. Lindire spoke about, you know, that beautiful brook back there, and now you have vehicles and potential contamination. It's just not a good thing. So whatever the town can do to help push this towards compliance would be the best move.
I'll offer a motion that we deny without prejudice the application seeking a special permit modification under zoning regulations, section 3.5.4.3, for small engine repair service with outside storage and display for property located at 371 North Granby Road.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Aye. So the application is denied. Thank you, John, for coming in and presenting. Hey, next, we had an application seeking a site plan modification for a prefabricated shed for property located at 18 Hartford Avenue. Again, this is site plan review, so we're just going to make sure some performance with the regulations and character there, and I don't see anything wrong with it myself.
So there's just.
Something to curb.
Well, just to clarify, there was a small amount of discussion that the setback of the shed to be placed in a location with distance between the shed and the parking lot, the specific distance estimated between three to five feet to be determined and approved by staff. Is that what I heard? Is there anything else to it? Well, then I'll motion that we approve an application seeking a site plan modification of a prefabricated shed for property located at 18 Hartford Avenue. The setback of the shed to be placed in a location with distance between the shed and the parking lot, the specific distance estimated between three to five feet to be determined and approved by staff.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
A little timeline.
Thank you. Okay, next, we are going to go back to the continued deliberations we started last week, which was for a site plan modification, special permit for storage of 563 Sammerbrook, and for zone change in the center edge. We did start the deliberations when Commissioner Chinney wasn't here, so I understand from the guidelines from the courts that.
Yes, it's not appropriate for you to participate. So I'll remain.
You're welcome to stay.
I will stay. My colleagues have to stay, but I won't participate in the debate.
And then, Bob, please chime in, because I apologize if I forget. Please chime in if you've got any time.
Oh, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to continue the discussions for 563 Sammerbrook, which was the wood operation. We had quite a bit of discussion, so. Go back with the commission. I think we are inclined, at least my summary was, the retail sales up front and the storage of materials supporting the business with temporary structures was what we were inclined for, but not the processing or cutting of timber and storing of logs. Got anything picked up from the commission?
I like what Abby, how Abby did this for us. Fill in the map, we put exactly where everything is. I had to go through, circle and make sure I could see them, but you could see. And if he cleans this up like we've got here, it's going to be an attractive and probably a very successful business. Because he can sell his, what he can sell, he can make what he wants, and he just needs to do his processing, industrial part of his business off-site, which is the sawing and storing of his logs. That's my feeling.
Bob, any comments?
No, I mean, I like the way, I look at it, but I agree that, you know, when the sawmill was technically buying logs, whiteout, and I don't think that's an appropriate use, but I like the way getting this drafted, the current proposal.
I don't quite understand that, do you?
He liked that, he spent a lot.
Good.
I had a question on condition number five, where talk about replace the berm with either an earthen berm or in lieu of a berm, an eight-foot stockade fence. I'm wondering whether, when we say stockade fence, does that mean made out of wood, made out of plastic, or what?
Yes.
And then the other, if it's plastic, I would want to have the color specified. I don't think a white plastic fence would be appropriate at that location.
So that's a good question. So the applicant, so the site plan is indicating a new eight-foot high fence for a section of that. And it was stated that he was planning on doing a wood stockade fence. So the implication is that that would be continued if he goes the route of a stockade fence as opposed to the berm? But I understand your point about, you know, clarifying that it's to be the same or something to that effect is what the applicant proposed.
I think you put wood stockade fence would clarify this. What we're doing.
Wood stock. Yeah, just put wood in there, wooden, yeah.
So that was condition five.
Number five.
I would also, since the application kind of got things added to it, I'd also want, at least for the record, if this commission agrees, that the wood cutting and the storage of logs and that processing materials is not in conformance with the C2 zone.
Yes.
Is that?
Is that not covered in six?
I just want to make sure, is that covered adequately in six, Abby?
Yes, so it says, "This special permit is for the specific activities outlined above. It is not intended to allow and shall not be interpreted to allow outdoor woodworking activities, sawmill operation, a commercial wholesale lumberyard where wood is processed and sold for general building construction purposes, storage of stumps and logs brought from off-site, stack planning, storage, sale of wood chips, commercial processing of firewood, or any other use or activity not specifically outlined in the special permit or outlined by right in the C2 business zone." So I'm glad that was asked. So it would be my interpretation, based on this language, that the sawmill would not be allowed to operate, period, even in conjunction with his commercial activities, which I think was the kind of the crux of this application, the question.
That's my understanding as well.
Yep.
Commission agree?
Yes.
Bob? So forget Bob's.
Yes, I agree that you don't want the sawmill operating outside the building. Or actually, the sawmill, but I think we agree that the plane itself being.
I was noticing that there's still some.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, good. That there's still some equipment stored.
Yeah.
Out front in the parking spaces for sale. How do we, how do we get it, make sure that this property goes in compliance?
Yes.
Can there be a bond associated with this? No.
So you can't require a bond. So it would be a matter of, once the special permit, if the commission approves it and it's issued, you know, I would give some reasonable timeframe to get the site into compliance or work towards getting into compliance. After that reasonable timeframe, then the commission would have two options, basically. You could look at revoking, modifying the special permit, so it would require them to come back. Or we would look at a cease and desist, or you could, or we could implement fines. So there's kind of some different options to try and gain compliance if it remains out of compliance.
Enforcement is difficult.
Abby, you have a sense from talking to the applicant of how long it's going to take them to be in compliance?
No.
Because we have 65 days to act on this right from now.
So we're getting a little close. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest delaying acting on this. Yeah, I'll just leave that at that. I wouldn't suggest.
That's why I asked.
Well, Mark, if we, if we do nothing and we turn this down, it's going to look like it looks now, and we have no say. If we go ahead and approve with Abby's conditions and very specific where things need to be and how it needs to be done, then we at least have the ability to do some enforcing, right? I think those are our two choices.
We get on the record that we're stating to the deal about the C2 business zone. As far as not accessory. The commission is in agreement with memo on our discussion points.
So just to clarify, the only condition that I believe required modification is item five to specify specifically a wood stockade fence. Is that the only change to the conditions?
I think.
I do, Abby, have a question. Are we, this site plan that's attached to the package, if I was to, this is the final agreed upon site plan that we, after all the iterations, we've all agreed to and talked about, the locations of each of the various items that are mentioned in the conditions?
No data by staff dated April 18th, 2024.
Yes, so this is, yeah, and that's a good question because it gets a little confusing.
It does.
So this is the site plan that I annotated to reflect the conditions of approval.
Okay.
So if you're looking to approve a site plan, it would just take off, you know, like you wouldn't have the outdoor woodworking area shown at all because that's not approved.
So do I?
Or you can, I mean, I suppose you can approve the special permit and the site plan with the attached notes.
I think we talked about, and I believe the applicant was okay with it. We said if we did approve it, the site plan would have to be modified because I think it should come off. And then we said staff, staff approval to, you know, have the site plan concur with any permit approval. Can we write that into, would that be satisfactory? So site plan to be modified in accordance with this, with these conditions? Does that good, Abby?
Mm-hmm.
So. The site plan included in something to the effect of the site plan included in the April 23rd, 2024 meeting package to be modified in accordance with the approved conditions is also approved potentially?
If I, you know, to be approved by staff, the staff can work on it. Or she doesn't have to come back.
Right.
Well, I simply stated, I simply stated that, again, the site plan included in the package to be modified in accordance with the approved conditions is also approved. But that's contingent upon it being modified.
Do you want to reference the last map that Abby gave us, which was dated April 18th, 2024? Notes added by staff? Would they be something specific?
That's a good idea.
That's something very specific and we can, everybody can see it.
Do we want to specify a time for submitting the modified site plan?
This is it.
Well, how would that, he'd have to have a.
Well, so he has to file the special permit within 90 days. So they would be all in one because of the special permit. Right, it's for the use and then the.
So the permit's not going to be complete until.
Right, right.
He has 90 days.
Right.
Good point, Eric. It's like you've been here before. Any other discussion? Bob, anything else?
But I don't agree with you in that the, what's taken about from making a conditional on the conditions that Abby laid out, but they have to file, what happens if they fail to file the point of fact? That, I mean, if approved or not, I'm just kind of, I'm trying to understand that.
Right.
That it wouldn't be filed and it would, it'd be null and void because it needs to be filed in 90 days with the special permit, the site plan. So it would be the approval of the null and, correct, Abby?
Right, so like this, yeah, this plan, and we're saying site plan, but that the plan is just representing the conditions of approval for these outdoor storage areas. It's not a site plan in the traditional sense where it's a lesser level of review because you're only looking at physical improvements. Like it's more about the use areas for the outdoor storage and display, if that makes sense. And so they kind of live together to graphically represent where these areas are allowed on the site.
Is it best not call the site done?
Yes, well, I would say, yeah, so the special permit, you know, these conditions of approval and then, you know, accompanying plan to accurately reflect those conditions or something to that effect.
So if she does not comply and file, get everything on file in 90 days, he would be back at square, square zero, a business operating without a permit and would be subject to a cease and desist order to stop everything right away. So I would think he would comply.
Well, just nothing, I think memo, I looked to Mr. Myers, who's typing furiously. There's nothing else. And Abby, would you like us to read how much of the memo? Want to reference the memo or?
I'm going to reference the entire.
Yeah, if you reference, yeah, the specific date of the memo.
All right, here we go. I'm going to propose, we approve an application seeking a site plan modification and special permit under zoning regulations, section 3.5.4.3 for three storage structures, outdoor, commercial activity, display and other side improvements for low property located at 563 Sammerbrook Street, C2 zone. All proposed conditions detailed in the April 18th, 2024 memorandum to the commission from the Director of Community Development, subject to the following modifications. Item five, to specify specifically a wood stockade fence, are condition of, conditions of the approval. The accompanying plan with updated notes dated April 18th, 2024, included in the April 23rd, 2024 meeting package is to be modified in accordance with the approved conditions. Once modified, the plan is also approved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Just to be clear, we have, we've approved part of what's been asked and denied part per the memo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next was, continued from our last discussion, was an application seeking a zone change from center edge to commercial center zone for properties located at 254 and 256 Sammerbrook Street. So we had closed the public hearing and started the discussion last time. And we were discussing the uses and the changes in the zone. We talked about zone lines. So, well, any want to add some comments to what we started last night?
Well, I, I've gone round and around and around and around, listening to the concerns of, I call them the street people, as Jane Haslam used to call the street.
Yep.
And worried about creep, business creep. Also the fact that this is a piece of property that we have an application from an applicant who we can be quite sure is going to follow through on his plans. But there again, we can't take that into consideration because nobody knows what's going to come down the road. So we're asking for a zone change, and I made up my own. And I went through thinking, what could we add? Could we do it, put it in the center commons instead? And then I looked and thought, no, 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 no. For me, right now, my feeling is I'm kind of thinking text amendment. Because if you kept it in the center edge and you had a text amendment that said that under specific conditions, under special permit, you could take a single building that's there and have multiple apartments, apartments that are not owned or lived in, would kind of solve that. And then take a look at the, the printing business and put that in the commercial if you want, so that if somebody wanted to do something small there, they could. I mean, it's just kind of a throwout idea. I've just really, I've looked at it, I've thought about it, and I'm kind of, I'm having a hard time with it.
I've thought about it too, and I actually think there's, Paula's idea has merit, and I think we ought to seriously consider it. The only thing you have to consider when you do a text amendment is it's going to apply to everybody else.
That's the problem.
But, you know, if you can live with that, then, then maybe it's a good idea.
Eric Brennan?
Well, sorry.
Or Bob?
So I've got a couple things to just offer.
Hold on, Bob.
I spoke about it last time. I think that's the first time that I've called it, you know, sticking out Sammerbrook Street. So I don't, I don't like the idea. If we were to protect the business, I think we would have to be very careful about, you know, acquiring properties with certain size, because it'll be allowed, you know, division into duplexes, basically. But, you know, I talk about that. I don't have a problem with reselling the print shop with the commercial buildings, you know, commercial use, because historically been that, but never been as far as I know. But, you know, that's my thoughts on it.
Thanks, Bob.
So just a couple of things. At the last meeting, and I think we just ran out of juice to discuss it, there was some discussion about the possibility of putting the piece of property in the two different zones to try to get the best of both worlds. The putting the actual house into the zone that would allow more uses, but creating a barrier strip on the frontage essentially that would prevent access, that would prevent the fear of your drive-through restaurants and gas stations. And I don't think we had an opportunity to fully vet that out if indeed that would truly prevent, I think, the situation that the board doesn't want to do. So I'd like to open that up for, I guess, discussion amongst us and Abby and the, at least theoretically, if that were to be done, would it protect? Open up that, the main portion of the property that I believe the applicant wants to have some additional uses for, but prevent some of the uses that I think are less desirable. Now regarding if that's not viable or it's something that we don't want to do, I would be in favor of a text amendment for the center edge zone to allow multifamily. And I wouldn't, I want to draw out of the folks' attention, I had the pleasure of walking the center as part of the center.
I saw you picking up trash.
Picking up trash, yeah, on Earth Day. And we walked right by this property. And I did take a picture. I don't, you know, I know we can't offer new evidence, but people can see with their eyes. The building, the house, again, a historical house, directly next to this house is a shambles. It's a complete disaster, overgrown and falling down. It doesn't look like anybody even lives there, although I think somebody does. And that piece of property is begging to be used. And if we don't afford some of these old houses, once their legacy caretakers are there and not able to care for them anymore, additional uses, they're all going to look like that. I'm adamant about it. And I don't know how to get that across to members of the commission and the Historical Society and others. There's a concept of putting property to use to preserve it. We must put these properties to use. Meg unfortunately can't be here tonight to speak on behalf, but she offered into evidence briefly, some of the work that's a little bit, it's not complete yet, the center study.
Can't, can't, that's.
Well, she offered it up.
Yes, she did. She did no, no results from it.
No, but, no, she said the results were overwhelmingly in favor of reuse. She did say that.
I didn't hear that.
No, you can't talk about it. She said it was done afterwards.
I believe we'll have to check the tape.
I know.
So nonetheless, we've got to do something to put these properties back into use. I don't know what it is. But again, that piece of, that piece of property, as well as others in this zone we're talking about, are literally going to be lost if we don't do something to save it.
Sir, do you think by looking at the text amendment, that if somebody came in and thought, well, I could buy it and put two apartments? I don't think any of us want to see a medi center there, that kind of thing. Because I think, at least for those of us that have been town long enough and really appreciate the beauty of our Grandy Main Street, is that we prefer not to see businesses cropping up down, building, it's called creep, building by building by building. So if we can avoid that some way, and maybe allowing a little more use within those homes, that could be a help.
I understand the fear, but I do think that creep is inevitable. Whether it's 10 years, 20 years, 50 years.
20 years, I won't be here.
I get it, but you'll have to think about the legacy of what you're leaving behind as well.
We can't consider that, Paula.
I am.
That's right, so Sinsbury has done a fine job. I hate to keep referring to it. I mentioned it at the last meeting. They have a beautiful center district with a historic overlay with these old maintains, buildings maintained pristinely and operating as businesses. We can do the same if we think. What I would hate to do is to potentially consider denying this application as proposed and consider a text amendment. And then we all get up here, but it's text amendment time and deny that too. Because I think we'll have.
We would have to be pretty sure.
Well, I think we'll have just as much outcry by the community that we heard last time when we consider the text amendment. So.
I think we all, we all liked the concept when we had the informal hearing. I think it's just how we get there.
Sure.
I want to give Brennan a chance.
Yeah, I think, you know, you mentioned Sinsbury a few times, but I think Grandy is different. You know, that's section south of the center of town is our historical area. It is residential. There isn't, there are not businesses there. And I think we need to prevent the creep from happening. And, you know, eventually, if what you're saying, you would be more open to having businesses pop up down that strip. I'm not in favor of that at all. I'd like to just keep it the way it is.
I hear you. That's what opinions we have and take.
Bob, unfortunately, the public hearing's closed, so I can't take anymore.
Appreciate that. I'll hook you after.
Eventually, well.
Yeah, I'll go. Abby, there was a question we did talk about. I know Eric brought it up about, and I think we talked about it a little bit, the meaning that that 30-foot, 50-foot wide buffer. Do you want to comment on that? Because I don't think, I looked at the map, it didn't seem that it would do.
Yeah.
Existing curb cuts, but let me comment on it for Eric.
Yeah, so I understand the intent or what the commission might be considering and looking to achieve with that. But I'm not seeing anything in the regulations that would feed into that to prevent something if you have a buffer strip like that. You know, some towns do have regulations where they speak to where driveways are located and what zone if they're serving another zone. But that's, that's not in these regulations.
So that, and I don't know, could we, could we cut off that curb cut? Since it's been staked on, it's there, isn't it?
Correct, yes. So typically curb cuts are preserved and DOT. I want, so they have the final review and authority when it comes to curb cuts on state routes. Now, that's not to say as part of a site plan approval, the commission does have the ability to look at traffic and circulation. But ultimately, it's, you know, DOT that would approve whatever plan this commission approves. So if, you know, the commission's looking to discourage something, you know, that's something we could look at as part of the site plan approval. But I don't know that you could outright prohibit something like that, especially if there's an existing one there. But I know the commission has done things with, you know, right in, right out. And also, it's usually in conjunction with DOT, but.
So that buffer zone, in your opinion, wouldn't really do much.
I'm not seeing how, yeah, how that would achieve much based on the current regs.
Yes.
Again, I mean, I go back to the informal hearing where we all were in favor of, we couldn't say in favor, sorry, we all were interested in the concept of the multifamily in there. It sounds like, from listening to most of the commission, that for that, the main, the large parcel, that's the bigger parcel's 256, Abby, is that correct? The print shop's 254?
Ah, hang on, hang on. Yeah, other way.
Other way around.
Yeah.
Yes.
Print shop's 256?
Yes.
So the, not print shop, the house lot, I think the commission was interested in that, but it looks like a text amendment is the, what's being leaned to here tonight, if I understand right. Am I also understanding that, Bob mentioned it, the print shop locations, it's a small lot anyway, and commercial, I think the applicant who wants to do zone change was interested in putting like a coffee or something like that, that commission's interested in changing the zone for that. Am I hearing that correctly?
I think. It's always been commercial, so. Business, been business.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it requires, state statute requires a zone change has to be the majority of the whole commission, right? So it's four people.
Three quarters or four?
It's.
Is it everybody or is it three quarters?
No, so it's a majority of the entire commission. So even if we have vacancies, so here you need four out of seven, even though you only have six seated. Yeah, so. So it's, yeah, majority.
Which property, again, which address is the?
So the print shop.
The print is 256. Yeah.
Bob, is, are you, is that where you're leaning towards?
Yeah, no, I have no problem moving the print shop into the center.
Center Commons.
Zone. It has historically always been commercial enterprise, because print shop was a house. And I, you know, also, you know, even if it's a standard Earth Zone, we would, I think, be favorably inclined to an application for a special permit for the use, the, he talked at one point about having his wife, wife's husband, studyologist, open, dog has been there, you know, we expressed support for that. I just don't like the idea of changing the entire zone for both properties, for both buildings.
Thank you. Abby, any other questions? If the print shop, 256.
256, yes.
If that changes, would the, if the applicant or the owner wanted to do a commercial coffee shop or something, would they be allowed to use 254 for parking, since they have an existing driveway?
Right.
I'm just trying to think, if we change it and they want to use it, would they really be able to use it? Can they ask for parking, or do they have to get a variance from ZBI?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I would think that they would need to have a lot line revision, so all of the parking is on the property where the business is located.
It's very, we'd have to change the zone because the zone line is really teeny.
Correct.
Can Center Edge have parking for?
Yeah, so, yes, because the use is primarily in, would be the commercial center. So as long, I would, I would say, again, without looking at the regulations, as long as all of the parking associated with that use is on the same property, then it would be okay. So I'm trying, so this is the same situation where there was the, the commission approved the site plan for at the barn parking to connect, to expand that parking lot and connect it to grassroots, and there was a lot line revision that was needed to pull that land away where the house was. So it reduced that, the lot size for that house, so all of the parking was on at the barn property. So I would think that this would be a similar situation.
Then it would be.
And I don't think that the zone necessarily would matter, but it'd be more of a property line situation.
Would there, like we did for the old Mason Hall, would a variance work, or no variance?
To be honest, I don't even know how much parking you could get on that property, though, in its current.
No, the, the house property. If the owner of the house wanted to have parking for the print shop, did they park on the house lot? But there's ways that parking.
Yes.
The zone, like they could have the lot line changed, the lot could be in the Center Edge Zone.
Yes.
And they could park in the Center Edge.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure we're not boxing the.
Because we have a bank, and this is going way, way back, the bank that's next to Cumberland Farms, that also has some of its property in another zone.
Yeah.
And they have the use of doing, I think, whatever they need because they own the property.
Right. To be honest, I mean, when it comes, you know, and we're kind of getting into the site plan piece of it, but when you look at this property, if there's a plan to do like a comprehensive site development and have the shared parking, you know, amongst the different uses, it makes the most sense to, I would think, extinguish the lot line. Otherwise, you're going to have to have a lot of cross easements and shared parking agreements, and you're probably going to have to do something with the lot line anyway.
That's up to property owner.
Correct. But from a, yeah, from a zone change standpoint and what they want to do.
So clarify.
Yeah.
If we do the zone change, and we do it for 256 in the Center Commons.
Yep.
Will he be able to use his other property for parking?
Not in its current configuration, no. There needs to be a lot line revision, would be my.
But that doesn't, that does not change the zone, though.
Correct.
It's just the property line.
Correct.
Okay, then that makes sense. Okay.
Which probably makes sense any long term.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Unlike any of the person's business. Okay. Thank you for, thank you. So, so again, I think the commission's still interested in the concept that was presented, just not in this means, correct?
Yeah.
So, any further talk on it? Eric Brennan? Eric?
Well, so, are we going to perform something tonight?
I would suggest if the commission's inclined, that we approve the zone change to center, commercial center for the print shops.
Well, for instance, 256.
And we would deny, and we would deny the zone change for 254. Is there, that's, that would be my, do you have any two separate motions?
Yeah, two separate, yes.
I wrote them as two because we need to stay on those two.
Yes.
Bob, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Any further discussion?
Go ahead. All right. All right. I'm going to propose a, first, one motion, a motion we approve an application seeking a zone change from Center Edge to Commercial Center for the property located at 256 Sammerbrook Street.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm saying, motion carries.
All right, I'm going to follow with another motion. Motion, we deny the application without prejudice, seeking a zone change from the Center Edge to the Commercial Center for property located at 254 Sammerbrook Street.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to deny the zone change for 254. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Opposed. We have one opposition from Commissioner Myers, other commissioners voted for. Motion carries. And then we have to write in, the print shop's 256.
Yes.
I want to make sure we got.
Yes.
The print shop.
Yes.
Come back and join us, Chris.
All right.
And I guess, you know, I would encourage the applicant to maybe check out, if you want, the text amendment process, we don't want this to be viewed as, you know, I think the idea is still there, just the permission is said probably a different way. Okay. Staff report is for us.
So one update, and I did include a memo in your packet regarding Station 280. So at the last meeting, questions came up about the decorative wall in front of the development. So I included two pictures that were submitted to me showing, and the dark, the bottom one is a little bit dark, sorry about that, but that were submitted showing kind of the color scheme that they are, that they plan for that wall, when someone comes out to stain that. And they still do not have an update about the specific date, but I was told probably at the end of the month is when we would have someone out there. And I know a question came up about the wall cap on top, so that is something that the onsite contractor has presented to the owners to consider, and I haven't heard if that's exactly what's planned. The approved site plan does not show a wall cap or specify a wall cap's needed, so it's not something that could be required as part of the site plan approval. So that's what I have on the law. Any questions?
Sure. Paul, I understand that. The picture that was part of the, I don't know if this was the original package or whatnot, it sure looks like there's a wall cap on the wall to man.
Yeah. So that is the rendering that was presented during a presentation. The approved site plan has a note that references decorative stamped concrete wall or something to that effect. There's no actual cross section of that presented, it's just a note with kind of an annotation on it. So certainly, you know, for future developments, you know, that's something.
Would be more specific. But in this case, they're interested in possibly considering it?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, so it's left with the owners right now. I don't have an update on that.
I'm sure they want to get their signs up quickly, so they have to do, they have to do the decorative.
That is true.
Finish before they put their sign on there, so.
Thank you, Abby, for following up on that.
I have a question or a concern. I gather that the owner is going to be staining the wall, so it's going to be a different color?
Painting or something.
Staining?
Yes, yes.
I just wondered if, given the fact that there's some controversy in town about the appearance of this thing, could we have a test area so we can actually see how it's going to look with the stain, so that we don't end up with a complete re-staining, which we don't like?
Do we have any to say about it? I don't think you have anything to say about it. I'd like to, but.
Well, there's no harm in asking.
No, of course not.
So, you know.
You could have a staining party.
I was picturing something that's going to end up looking something like the bridge over Grammy Gore. That's kind of what I thought about that.
These pictures look, they look nice.
They look nice.
Eric, I hear what you're saying, but we really can't tell the applicant what colors to do, and I think if you open it up to an opinion, they'll get.
Dozens.
30% hate it, love it, don't care.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just happy the developers going to be doing something, and I would just encourage them to, maybe taking your point, Eric and Abby's talked to him, that it strongly suggested that they do it, you know, make it look what the public would say is nice.
Muted.
Muted, yeah, muted, exactly.
Not bright.
You don't want it red.
So now, if you ask a question, I have a question. And it gets back to what we talked about earlier. If you have a building and it's owned by a person and she has her business in the building and she have an apartment upstairs.
So there are several provisions, and it depends on what zone it's in. So that we, there's a provision in here for certain zones for caretaker's apartment, so that would be a situation where you have an employee on site or business owner live, work in the same unit. There's also, by special permit, you can have mixed use, so that would be a residential and commercial use, so it depends on where it is.
This would be the garage that he was looking at doing something with.
Got it.
So I'm thinking that if a family member had a business there, they're, they're living, I mean, they're working there and they have an apartment upstairs. Troublemaker, I'm sorry.
So for something like that.
I think it's a.
Not currently in that.
Not in the Center Edge.
Yeah, not currently in that zone.
I thought if you lived in the building, you could have an apartment.
So Center Edge, you can have a mixed use building with residential, non-residential uses. However, if you also have a residential in that, in the main house, so you have two units on one lot, that's considered multifamily, and you would need at least eight acres in the Center Edge zone.
That's the text amendment we were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah. I'm just saying whether you could just use the one building, but that wouldn't, I understand, you know, I.
Yeah, and there's not provision in the Center Edge for caretakers.
Well, maybe we ought to consider amending our regulations to provide for that.
That's right.
It seems like a pretty reasonable thing to do, to me.
I think so, too.
And it's a pretty efficient use of land, and it enables people to be a little more economical in terms of how much they have to pay to live in this town.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we ought to think about it.
But that's what I heard out in there tonight, we want to look at this particular thing, was not necessarily the complete zone change, but allowing more things in that zone.
Yeah.
Especially since there's a lot of structures on there, Commissioner Myers pointed out, some ones that are in distress, and I think it's something we do want to look at.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's not just that, so we have, you know, we have the other structures that are in town that, there's a couple of others that are concerning, right?
Or responded.
You know, and people have different reasons why they are, and I can't answer those, but I think we have to look at our regulations and do it the right way. I think this was a good discussion tonight.
Very good discussion.
There was one way that we went about, the commission's not comfortable with, but there's other ways to get what the applicant wants. Anything else, Abby?
Nope.
Any other commissioner reports, information? Our next meeting's not till May 14th because we have an extra.
Yeah.
Tuesday, so May 14th. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
The motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. All right.